Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November 8th, 2018 Selectmen's Meeting. This time I'd like to ask Selectman Bennett to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very much.
Thank you.
I'll accept approval of the minutes from October 16th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Are there any edits or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. At this point in the meeting, welcome everyone. At this point in the meeting, if you haven't been here before, at the beginning of this meeting, we entertain new business, that is, business that's not on the agenda that you'd like to bring to the attention of the Selectmen. I see one of our regulars has some. Sir, would you join us?
Bill Bradstreet, precinct one town meeting member. If I could, there was two things. One, in Danvers is Bradstreet Avenue, the end of which stops the Danvers River. There's a small area that looks like a park. Would it be possible for the town to consider putting Megan Duggan's name on that park? She's done a lot for the town, bringing us recognition for her efforts representing the country and the town. I thought it would be a nice gesture.
So we do have, the Recreation Department does have a process of recommendations for naming, and we will pass that along to the Rec Department.
All right, thank you.
They may be contacting you as well.
Thank you. The other thing was, I was under the impression rightly or wrongly, that the town controlled streets to the side of the street, there's a grass strip, and then the sidewalk, to the inside of the sidewalk. Having said that, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I've seen a number of signs placed on, if that is town land, on Danvers property without, I'd have to say, without permission, some political, some of the signs are for other items or what have you. I noticed there were several signs on Center Street a few weeks back, but the signs placed on those, not private property, but town property, and I thought we weren't supposed to be doing that. And if not, what can be done about it?
Thank you. So that, Like Falling Leaves, is an annual event, and I think that, I'll defer to the town clerk about, would you, you or the town manager, about the rules on placing signs? I know you've dealt with it before.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On occasion, we'll get a call from a concerned citizen, a private resident regarding sign placement on town property. When we are made aware of sign placement on town property by a phone call or a visit to our office, we contact Public Works and ask that Public Works go out and make a determination whether that sign is or is not on town property. If it is indeed on town property, they remove the sign and bring it back to the Public Works garage.
Thank you. There is no one formula that says something. I understand, the common thought is that the grass strip between that and the sidewalk is town property. I know it's so many feet off of the center line, and it varies in sections of town, some of them more historical, others some without sidewalks. When in doubt, call the town clerk's office.
So it's, for me as well as for others who might be listening or concerned, it's a phone call away?
It's a phone call for someone to make the determination.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else with new business that's not on the agenda this evening? All right, hearing none, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Three. The Board will vote to accept the gifts in accordance with MGL Chapter 44, Section 53A. Mr. Town Manager.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. I'll start with a small one, and then I'll turn the microphone over to Pam Parkinson. We had a local business recently reach out to the town with some office furniture that they were looking to dispose of, and the Buildings Division was able to go over and assess the furniture and found it was pretty high quality and would allow us to do some replacement within certain offices in town. So we have a gift acceptance here, a request to accept that furniture with a value of roughly $5,000. That's the first item. I think we should deal with that, and then we'll move on to the more interesting.
I'm sorry, did you mention the name of the company? I have it here, it's North Star Contracting Group?
That's, that is the.
Oh, they're remodeling, okay.
100 Endicott, which I believe is one of the old.
Ozren Sylvania.
Buildings.
We want to give credit where credit's due.
That's right.
Is there any questions or comments on the donation, the gift slash donation of furniture? Any questions on that? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion, please.
Move the accept to receive a gift from office furniture under Mass General Law Chapter 44, Paragraph 53A, as presented by the town manager.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
And the second item, while Pam is making her way to the microphone, we had a very generous gift made to the town by a person that is well-known to Pam and well-known to the Senior Center. And I will, without stealing Pam's thunder and explaining it more poorly than she will, I'll give her a chance to talk to you tonight about what that gift is.
Thank you. I'm Pam Parkinson, I'm the Director of Senior and Social Services for the Town of Danvers, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight to ask the Board if you would accept this generous gift that was left to the Danvers Senior Center on behalf of Rosanna Massey, longtime Danvers resident who came about to use the services at the Senior Center only after her husband died about approximately 10 years ago. She lived to the ripe young age of 97. We celebrated her 97th birthday at the Senior Center. I attached a picture for your enjoyment on the back, so you could see the before and the after. She was a beautiful young woman who served as a First Lieutenant in a MASH unit in North Africa and Italy where she met her husband, Henry Massey, came back, ended up settling in Danvers over 60-some-odd years. After her husband passed 10 years ago, she found herself isolated, lonely, she was legally blind. A friend talked her into coming to the Senior Center, although she felt that she wasn't old and she didn't need the Senior Center, but convinced her to come and try it, and from that time, she started coming maybe two days a week until the time of her death. She was coming five days a week regularly and enjoying the services and the connectedness with her peers and with others and feeling a part of something that she didn't have in her own home. So she approached me about a year and a half ago and said, you know, I know I'm not going to live forever, and, you know, I have nieces and I have nephews, but I would like to leave part of my estate to the Senior Center because of the wonderful work that you people do. And of course, I was very grateful, and we talked a little bit about what she would like, and she told me how much she enjoyed the meals that we served in our café, and she had wished that, you know, that was something that we could do every day. She enjoyed our special evening meals, so when we had transportation and she could come to our Henry dinners that we do monthly, or to our patio parties. So after a little discussion, she said that was what she would like to see is whatever she was leaving to be part of her, out of her estate, to be used towards continuing the nutrition program that we're offering at the Senior Center. So probably about six months ago, I got a letter from her attorney saying that they were working on closing up the estate, and then just more recently, we got a letter that we received our first disbursement of a partial settlement of her estate in the amount of $50,000. So I know I can say on behalf of myself and my staff that we are extremely grateful for the generosity that she's offered to us, because there are lots of other charities out there that are deserving as well. And even far greater than that, I think for us and those of us who work at the Senior Center, is the fact that, not the money, but the fact that we were able to touch a life that really meant something to her, because she chose us to have a significant portion, and it gives us the reassurance to know that sometimes if you don't feel valued, things like this come out of the blue, and they really give us the reassurance that we're doing what we should be doing, and touching people's lives that don't realize it until they're in need of such services. And we, God willing, we all get old one day, we'll all need the services that we have at the Senior Center. So I hope that you'll agree to accept this generous gift and that we'll be able to take good use of it and try to enhance and enrich some more lives of the people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Selectmen, any comments? Mr. Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pam, while you're here, I would like to say thank you. I would also like to put in a plug. Well, there's all kinds of, I hope maybe sometime in the next month or two, you would do a show and tell at the meeting so that people at home could see, even with some brief pictures of what people are doing. Everybody doesn't get and doesn't sign up for the newsletter, but there's so many wonderful things for older people like me and Clark to do down there. And especially, I'd like to put a plug in. We have a, I call it the old man's dinner, but some people say, well, you don't have to be that old. On next, on Monday, the 19th, we have our November, I don't know what it's called, Pam.
Called the men's club.
And Pam and John Cohane and Larry Crowley, I think, are pretty much, other people volunteer. It's a great little, it's a great little dinner. We're only up to about 36 or 38 people. I try to find another older person every month to come and try it. It's welcoming, I don't know who our speaker is for November, but it's a great, it's a great thing, come, if you come for your first time, I'll buy your ticket. But otherwise, it's such a wonderful senior center. I wish we could publicize to welcome more people and let them know, because some of us are a little shy at our age, you know, because we're not stars for the day anymore. So, great job down there, Pam.
Thank you, thank you. The November speaker is Richard, I can't say his last name, but he's the CEO and Chairman of East Boston Savings Bank, and he's also an avid antique car collector. He has a collection of over 35 antique cars, so he's going to be talking a little bit about how he got today and also sharing his passion for the collection of antique vehicles.
We recently, and I'll shut up after this, one of our speakers did a presentation on Revere Beach and the history of Revere Beach. It was absolutely fascinating with the old Ferris wheel and, you used to, sometimes they rented bathing suits, and they were wool, and they had to be rented on one side, because you couldn't go naked or half-dressed across the beach. It was just fascinating, so it's a great, November 19th, Monday, if it's your first time, I'll buy your ticket.
Thank you.
He's telling you the truth, at the Swimmers' Hall of Fame, the history of women in bathing suits is there on Revere Beach. Women started wearing bathing suits at Revere Beach, so he's not lying. This is a compliment to you, Pam, and your staff. It is so wonderful that they've decided to do this. I don't know how you're going to handle the funds, but I'm sure, you know, you've had some great ideas, and I hope you fulfill her wishes, because that's what's really important. But thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pam, there's certainly a testament to the good work that you do at the Senior Center and around town. Everybody only has positive things to say about you, praise your employees, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
I do honor. Thank the family and the Massey family, and thank the Senior Center, one of the nationally accredited senior centers, and this, you know, it shows, it shows. We got a nice write-up about the Rosanna Massey, and actually, I have a couple of copies for the press if they want those, so they can pick them up later, and contact Pam for any background information. Certainly would be nice to see her name in the paper for this generous, generous gift. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to accept the gift as presented.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, thank you very much. Agenda Item Number Four, the Board has received an application from the Danvers Senior Center, 25 Stone Street, Pamela Parkinson, manager, for a one-day wine and malt beverage license on Thursday, November 15th, 5:00 to 7:30, for the annual harvest ball at that location. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I've been requested by Pamela and the Senior Center to represent this application. It's a standard process that the Board asked that we establish a few months ago to allow the Senior Center time to do other than sit here and wait till appear before the Board, and we know what their operations are, and they do its fine job.
Thank you. Any questions on the application? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the application or approve the application as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Five, a public hearing will be held on the application of North Shore Autobody, Inc., doing business as North Shore Autobody, 20 Newbury Street. David Bukieri, owner, for a change of ownership at a Class II dealer license at that location. Hello, welcome.
Hi.
Hi, could you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm David Bukieri, owner of North Shore Autobody, 1 in Danvers, and I'm here to change back the license from Moore GMC's name to North Shore Autobody, because he moved out, he was renting some office space I had available, and he was there for about a year and didn't work out the way he wanted, and I just wanted to have the license back, so I submitted the application.
Thank you. And can you tell us what your plans are for business operations at that place, at that location?
My main goal right now is to just keep the license active, so that if maybe another tenant in the future wanted it, or I wanted to get back into selling cars. Selling cars and fixing cars are two different businesses, and they both come with their own problems, so I decided that the collision industry's been what I've been doing for the last 33 years, and selling cars is like a compliment to it, was the whole idea, getting the license on the property. And I'm probably just going to keep it active for now. I have no plans on selling many cars at all in the future, right now, immediately.
Thank you. Selectman Langley.
I'm all set, thank you.
Selectman Clark?
I'm all set.
Selectman Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the clerk, is there a limit on the number of licenses we have in town or can have?
I believe there is, Mr. Chairman, but at the moment, I was looking for the backup on the application, and I've misplaced it, but any, any limit that is in place currently would fall through to the next, to the next application.
Well, my thought process is, he wants to hold the license in case somebody else wants to use it in the future. Is this going to prohibit somebody else from applying for a Class II license?
At that location?
No, in any location.
The Board can give out as many Class II dealer's licenses.
Well, that was the question originally, is there a limit?
No, there is no limit on Class II dealer, I misunderstood your.
Thank you very much, that's it.
Selectman Mills?
Nothing, thank you.
I have nothing as well. This is a public hearing, is there any member of the public who'd like to speak to this application?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, ayes. Aye. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the application of North Shore Autobody, Inc., DBA, North Shore Autobody, 20 Newbury Street, for a change of ownership of a Class II dealer license at that location.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Six, a public hearing will be held on the application of BW Danvers, LLC, doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings Grill, Independence Way, Robert Lavoy, manager, for a change of manager at that location. Welcome, sir.
My name is Robert Lavoy, presently the general manager at Buffalo Wild Wings, Danvers. Been with the company for a little, going up to five years, excuse me. I've been an assistant general manager for a little over three years. I have approximately 47 years of management experience in the restaurant business. My family used to own Lavoy's Ballad Restaurant in Saugus. I managed that from the time I was 19 until we sold it. And then I went in the nursing home business, figuring, get out of the restaurant business, and I couldn't believe how hard that was. I did that for about three, four years. I ran Brooksbury Village, the six dining rooms at Brooksbury, and then ran the café for two and a half years. And then I went back into the grill business, and here I am at Buffalo Wild Wings. So our manager has left, and I moved up from the assistant general manager's position to the general manager's.
Is this the first time you've had a liquor license in your name for any of your past experiences?
Yes.
It is, okay.
It's always been in my family's name.
I'll start with Selectman Bennett.
No questions, pretty cut and dry. I just want to point out to you, your passport expires in four months, so don't travel out of the country, you won't get back in.
Selectman Clark?
That's, I didn't even notice that, thank you.
I just found out myself, because I'm taking a flight in the.
Six months, yeah.
Next month, you gotta have flights now, too. We missed the presentation we had originally with Buffalo Wild Wings. We had a member of our audience back then who had come from Buffalo, New York, if you remember, and he gave us the whole background of how Buffalo Wings got their name, quite interesting. You guys have done a good job down there. Anytime I've gone there, it's been very well-run, I've seen, and I wish you luck.
Thank you.
Selectman Mills?
I think good luck, Mr. Stillavoy.
Thank you.
Hi.
So just for anybody who watches calories and doesn't eat wings, like me, I went in and you have a wonderful chicken breast taco, very healthy, low-calorie meal, so I just thought I'd get that out there for, because I was afraid to go in there, because wings are very dangerous.
We have many salads, too.
And you have very nice things, so I'm just giving you a little plug there, but other than that, I have no questions. Thank you.
So I generally ask the same questions of all the applicants. I see here that you're going to spend 50 hours or more on the premise, and that you are certified by SafeServe.
I have, yes, I have Serve Safe Alcohol, Serve Safe Food, allergy awareness, CrowdSaver, ChokeSaver, whatever license we need, and they're all up to date. I have copies of everything if you need.
And you have a copy of the town's regulations on liquor service?
Yes, I do, I have three copies of it.
I'll ask that you review that.
I have three managers that are also all licensed, and all of these that are under me.
Great. This is a public hearing, is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak to this application?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Motion on the.
Move the application as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to move the application as presented. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Agenda Item Number Seven, the Board has a receipt of an application from St. Mary's School at 14 Otis Street, Mary Lavassa, manager, for a one-day wine and malt beverage license on Saturday, December 1st, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. for a sip and shop event at that location. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sharon Burrow, the principal at St. Mary's, and I'm here on behalf of the school and this application this evening. We are holding a sip and shop, which is exactly that, vendors coming in, a whole host of different kinds of vendors for the holiday season, and we are requesting a one-day liquor license, because there will be beer and wine sold. But Mary Lavassa is tip-certified and will be on the premises for the entire evening.
Thank you. Selectman Clark?
No questions.
Selectman Mills?
No questions.
Selectman Langley.
We lost you. I hope you're enjoying your new job.
I am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no, what kind of stuff will they have for sale?
Oh, you should come. Everything from jewelry, children's clothing, adult things. Of course, we'll have some new St. Mary's spirit wear.
I will be wearing that.
Just a very simple but important evening, just to celebrate the community.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Bennett.
No questions.
I have no questions either. I'll entertain a motion on the application.
Move the application as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the application. Is there any other court discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, good luck.
Thank you, and I will add, I'm very happy to continue serving in my other capacities for the town.
You do everything well.
Agenda Item Number Eight, the Board has a receipt of an application of Danvers Youth Football Cheerleading, Paula Vogel, event coordinator, for a road race on Saturday, December 9th, 10 a.m. start time beginning at any of Danvers High School. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, it's nice to be here.
Could you introduce yourself for the people who are watching at home?
I can, Paula Vogel, I'm a coach and volunteer with Danvers Youth Football Cheerleading. We are a 501(c)(3). We kind of manage a group of roughly about 120 kindergarten through eighth grade girls, although boys are open to join us. We cheer for the town football team during the season, and we also have competitions. Our teams work really hard, they've been very successful in their competitions, and this year, we're doing a bid for Nationals, which will be held in Florida at Disney in But in order to do that, we do need to fundraise, and so we'd like to do a road race to help in those efforts.
Great. We've received information in our packets with the agenda and route, and all the application is in order, Mr. Town Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, all the necessary approvals are in order.
Wonderful, thank you, I'll start with, Mr. Mills?
I think, sounds wonderful, good luck.
So, I love cheerleading competitions, but, so, have you, with our new turf fields, one of the things I had hoped would happen is that we would start having some of our competitions there. So when is Danvers going to host a big, I mean, that draws in a lot of people, so when do you think we'll be able to get one hosted in Danvers?
So we have hosted it previously.
Okay.
So this year and last year, we didn't, but I think it was three years consecutively we did. We aren't able to host those competitions outside, they do need to be indoors because obviously heat weather. But we have been hosting the Cape Ann Youth Football League cheerleading competitions.
Maybe you could do a summer one? Just saying.
That's a great idea. I will, I will bring it to the Board.
Yeah, why not? We have great parking, it's a great field, it's perfect for.
Oh, it really is.
Cheerleading competition.
It's a fabulous facility, it really is.
I always wanted, when I was younger, they used to have band competitions at some of the places, and I can't believe we haven't brought that back. I mean, all the high schools would compete, I always wanted that at the turf field, I mean, setup, so anyways, well, you have my support anyway, so, thank you.
A minute?
No questions.
Selectman Clark?
No questions.
Nor do I.
I wish you luck with your voice, I got the same problem, had it for a month, and it's very frustrating.
Oh, I appreciate it, thank you.
No questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the application as presented.
Motion made?
Second.
And seconded. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck to you.
We're up again.
Yes, you are. The Board has a receipt of an application from Danvers Youth Football Cheerleading, Paula Vogel, event coordinator, for a first-time banner over High Street, December 3rd through the 9th.
So we have actually decided to withdraw the application. We will be doing lawn signs, but duly noting the earlier discussion on lawn signs, we'll make sure that they are posted on private property.
Thank you. All right, then. Agenda Item Number 10, the Board has a receipt of two applications from the Danvers YMCA, for first-time banners over Maple Street from January 14th to 20th, for a dinner and dance fundraiser for camperships, and again, over Maple Street, April 8th through 14th, for Healthy Kids Day. Is there someone to speak to this? Welcome.
Hi, yes, I'm Suzanne Malik, I'm the Outreach Director for the Danvers YMCA, and we're very excited to be able to utilize the banners that you have over the street to promote some of our community events, one of which, as we mentioned, is our big dance that we hold in February, and that is open to the community, and that is sort of the end and celebration, but also a very important event for us, to raise the funds that we put back into the community through the campership program for summer. The other event is a community event called Healthy Kids Day, and that's open as well to the entire community. to the entire community. It's a free community event that we host in our gym, and typically we end up with over about 100 to 150 families, and we're looking to invite more of the town and community and get them involved in our fitness activities, and really, it's designed to educate and get people excited about summertime, but also to help them understand that summer is an important time to get kids active, keep them active, so they're not hanging out at home and playing on their computers, hiding out in the air conditioning, and not eating the right food, so. We are hoping we might be able to put these banners over the street, and it'll be the first time that we've done so, but I have all the paperwork that you guys have put together in regards to the specs on the banner and the quality and so forth.
Thank you very much. Selectman Langley.
I have no questions. I think the rail trail committee goes in and does something with helmets for the kids at that, and, which is my biggest pet peeve living on the rail trail, that I see people on the rail trail, young people with no helmets, so it's a big one for me.
Yeah, no, that's a huge one, and we hope to expand that as well and also educate the parents, because the kids will wear them if the parents do.
Right. Don't buy the kid the bike, that's my rule.
Selectman Bennett.
No questions.
Selectman Clark.
No questions.
Selectman Mills.
I'd just like to say that I had used the YMCA a lot, and the quality of people that go there, young kids like one-year-old getting thrown in the pool and swimming better than their parents, and older people like me using the exercise rooms, it's a, it is really the nicest combination of people, and the outreach that I feel down there is so healthy. It seems like everybody is included, and the children's programs seem to be just perfect, so.
Thank you.
Keep up the great work.
I'm glad you didn't say you had a woolen swimsuit.
No.
I didn't, because I don't.
Thank you very much. I have no questions, good luck to you. I'll entertain a motion on the.
Move the application as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck to you. Good luck in your events.
Thanks very much, thank you.
Agenda item number 11. A public hearing will be held on the following petition by Comcast to construct a line for telecommunications on the public way or here and after specified. Industrial Drive and Electronics Avenue, and I will let the town manager and his staff provide details.
I believe we have town engineer Steve King here tonight, as well as, I believe, someone from Comcast to present this item, and I'll defer to the gentleman to determine who will go first.
That's Steve King, town engineer at DPW. I was approached by Comcast and Do Snap Engineering to install Comcast on the ground telecommunications lines roughly from the Route 1 layout at Industrial Drive, up Industrial Drive, and then through Electronics Ave as well. I reviewed the plans that they submitted, I made some comments. I also had the Electrical Engineering Division review them as well with their comments. Do Snap and Comcast have made the revisions as we provided to them, and they've had their, they submitted a final application and set up plans like you've seen in front of you with our comments and our concerns addressed, and I guess we'll take any questions you guys have.
Looks as if we're, okay. Is there any questions on the board side, or Mr. Bennett?
Thank you. What type of questions or objections would you have had?
I just wanted to make sure they're clarified on some of the crossings and clearances between the existing utilities that are currently on the street, also some of the paving specifications that require, I want to make sure that they comply with our Street and Highway Division regulations.
Great, thank you.
Selectman Clark.
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Mills, any questions?
No, thank you, Steve.
Selectman on this, any questions on this?
I'm all set, but thank you.
I do have a general question, not related to specifically Comcast, but when work is done in the roadway or the sidewalks, my presumption is that the town looks for a surety that it'll be restored to its original grade, its original, you know, level of service.
Correct. We require at a minimum that they meet the existing conditions out there, if not, provide further clarification that they'll put more back as far as paving risks and dimensions or restore everything back to what it was before they, to a better condition than what it was before it started.
Thank you very much. I have no other questions. I'll, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to speak from the public on this application?
Motion.
This gentleman would like to.
Yep.
Steve, for Wild Wings, Comcast, I'd like to just speak in favor of the petition.
Thank you. Any other public, any members of the public like to speak to this application?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion on the application.
I make a motion that we approve the following petition by Comcast to construct a line for telecommunications under the public ways as specified.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck, thank you very much. Thank you for the information. The board will conduct an annual tax classification hearing. Always the highlight of.
I agree. Before Mr. Poole springs into action, I'll introduce, he has a team with him tonight, and I should start by introducing Rodney Conley, our new Director of Finance and Administration. I've stopped counting the days and started counting the weeks, but he's settling right in and arrived just in time to participate in the audit and get kick-started on the budget process. So Rodney is joined, well, I should say, Steve is joined by Rodney, as well as Dave Saunders, the Assistant Chief Assessor, is here tonight, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Poole, who can walk the board through the actions that are required this evening.
I'll just need you to do the slides.
Oh, I guess I'm advancing the slides, so, there we go.
All right. You guys ready?
Mark and roll.
All right. So tonight, just like every year, I ask you, it's like the minimum residential factor, an open space discount, select to grant or not a residential exemption, grant or not a small commercial exemption. You know, we have one, one item that we had to add due to some changes at the state and the way they want us to supply them with the vote from the Board of Selectmen, and so I'll ask you to grant me authority to sign on behalf of the Board of Selectmen on the DOR gateway. So what I'll do is, is I will, after you guys take the vote and determine your shift, I will go down and fill out that information in the gateway, print off the form, bring it back to you, have each of you sign it, and then I'll scan it and then upload it into the gateway for the state's record of the vote and that you agree with what I entered. So I'll be looking for authorization to do that. It'll be able to avoid last year, I don't know if you remember, we had to have you come down to Town Hall a couple days later and sign it. It was the last minute change the state made in the way they want evidence to the, to the Board of Selectmen's vote. All right, so FY19, changes in property valuation. So overall, tax base went up 5.3%. The residential was probably the, was the largest increase outside of personal property with about 5.5% was the revaluation percentage. The reason for the difference is that I try to remove growth, any other changes we make during the year that don't contribute to a market adjustment based on our sales analysis. Commercial, industrial were 2.2, 1.2 percent respectively compared to last year. The residential went up 9%, and both commercial, industrial went up about 7%. We do, we do see the market slowing a little bit. Buyers seem to be a little bit more picky. Houses are sitting on the market a little bit longer. I don't think, I don't think anything's falling off, but just general observations, and the sales tend to seem to be reflecting that. And with those valuation changes, you get a distribution of values relatively similar to the previous several years. It's about, you know, 76, 77% residential, the rest is made up of commercial, industrial. So I put this chart together to try to illustrate the relationship between the commercial, industrial base and the residential base over the past 19 or 20 years. I think it shows, you know, a few things. One, the housing market is much more volatile than the commercial base, and the commercial base has remained relatively stable with some slow growth over the past 20 years. The other thing it shows is as the, you know, the residential market accelerates faster than the commercial market grows, you see the percentage of the tax base essentially shrink, not due to the commercial base shrinking, but just that, you know, the commercial base is remaining stable and the residential base is outpacing it. Up, as you see the peak in 2000, FY2007, which would represent the peak of the housing market about a decade ago before the collapse, was, we were at, actually, interesting enough, we're at almost the exact same percentage, 23.7% residential and commercial base as we are today in FY19. And then as the market collapsed, and kind of the residential base trailed off and the commercial base remained stable, you see how the trend line on the commercial percentage actually starts to tick up a little as commercial gains a larger percentage of the base. You know, so really, a couple takeaways would be that, you know, the commercial base, I don't think is shrinking, I think it's been stable over the past 19 or 20 years, and that, you know, I think housing market is volatile as, you know, but, as what the economy is doing, but also I think this area is just generally getting more expensive to live in as a, as a relationship to income. And this is our levy comparison, so after, you know, we take a look at what we're trying to raise in the tax levy and what the, the state allows us to raise under our levy limit. So that's calculated pretty simply by taking last year's levy limit, multiplying it by 2%, and then adding this year's growth, which I'll get into in the next slide, and that's going to give you the new levy limit. Davis doesn't have any debt exclusions or overrides or anything like that, so that's pretty much what you can raise, and you put that against your actual levy, which is what, which is what we're trying to raise from the taxes, and subtract the two, and that could do your excess levy capacity right here. And new growth. So this year, this year was, was a pretty good year for growth. Came in with $795,000 in tax dollars. Personal property had, we had a good year in personal property as far as growth. Clearly, 100, probably about 30% of that came from only one account, it was total wine. So a combination of their, their inventory and machinery used to, that they conduct in their daily business accounted for over $100,000 of that. Commercial, industrial was significantly lower than last year, largely due to, last year we had RCA coming online 100%. We also had the largest phase of Abbey Oban completed last year, although they're still continuing through their phases. It's much smaller, we're realizing much smaller pieces now than we did in FY2018. The residential market pretty much, pretty, pretty consistent the past three years. You know, we're really not going to see the growth we saw in '15 and '16. Square footage is, new square footage is growth, so '15 and '16, we had all the Kirk Bryant Rose Court apartments coming online, and would, you know, I don't foresee that size project happening, anything, in the near future. Generally, we get our 10 to 15 new house starts, our half a dozen to 10, maybe 11, two to three family conversions into condos, and then a number of additions and remodels, and that pretty much makes up the bulk of, of our residential growth now. And this slide, this slide shows a bunch of stuff. I know everyone's usually interested in what the single-family average did year over year. Let me look up at the top, top right there, you got, it's like we increased about 5% over from last year. Condos, we saw a big increase at 9% in the commercially industrial, and as an average, about 2.4%. And so what this, the rest of this, what this illustrates is, last year, the board chose to shift the, the tax rate to 1.377, and so if that was to remain constant and then we decided not to change the shift, this is what, this is essentially what it would look like as, as, as it affected the tax rate, the single-family average tax bill, condo average tax bill, and also, and also how, how the distribution of the classes with the reallocation of the burden of the taxes picked up by the commercial base, how it would work out as a percentage from FY18 to FY19. So this, this is the, I think it's, this is the second item, so that would be, you know, the, as related to the residential factor, this would be the open space discount. The open space discount is, the state allows you to add a fifth classification to your real property, which of open space, and if you choose to, if you choose to classify an open space, you can then assign a, a discount to that land. It's not, not very popular in the state, just mostly due to the fact that it's, well, forms a redistribution within the residential class, so anything you grant them as a discount, the burden is then picked up by the rest of the residential classes, so it's an increase to the rest of the tax base within the residential classes. And also, it's been found that, you know, you grant someone, you grant a discount to an open space for five or 10 years, and it really hasn't, it didn't serve in any way to keep it open. It's, they're still developed, it isn't as effective as a chapter land program, which the chapter land program is usually, if you can get into, to an open space criteria that you typically see, you can get into a chapter land program, which would be more advantageous for the town and the taxpayer. And then the next two is a residential exemption and the small commercial exemption. Both of them are essentially shifts within their own classes. The residential exemption allows you to grant an exempt, grant an exemption to resident, to people who live in town, and not, you don't, and not grant the exemption to, to like three families, two, three families where it's landlord-owned and they rent it out. But the problem with that is it tends to, what ends up happening is that you have a lot of older people who own their homes in trusts, who don't qualify for the residential exemption, so they end up paying more due to that. You also, it also tends to shift the burden from homes, tends to shift the burdens from homes that are above the average, so, because you have to, when you take off, when you take off the exemption off all the values, you then recalculate the tax rate, so you're in effect have a larger tax rate times a lower value, and as you work up to the average is the break-even point, and anything over the average is actually results in a higher tax bill. So there's a few complications to that, as well as it's, it's a huge administrative, administrative burden, likely would result in potentially having to increase the head count to manage it and research the ownership records every year. A small commercial exemption is an exemption that's granted to, to, up to 10% of the value to commercial, to commercial properties with less than 10 employees, and the assessed value cannot exceed $1 million. The problem, this is, you're very rarely, the state, largely what was found was the problem was that the tax savings, generally, the building owners are not the person conducting business in it, it's a lease agreement, and so they, the building owners are the ones that realize the, the tax incentive, not the people who, not the small business that you're trying to help. And also, if there's a number of tenants within a, within a strip mall, it also prevents them from being, from qualifying for the exemption. You know, both of them, it's kind of, they've kind of, it summarizes, it's a Robin, Robin Hood effect, where you're shifting, you know, wealth from, from higher values, trying to shift it down to the lower values. And that concludes the presentation.
All right. I will open up to discussion by the board. Mr. Clark.
You picked the wrong question to speak first. This is probably one of my least favorite things all year long, and I don't profess to be proficient in the knowledge of this. I've often relied on common sense. We're comparing apples with oranges and trying to get grapefruit. I mean, they, they tax commercial and residential differently, different basis for it. I think it's totally a crapshoot, and it's a matter of how much you want to penalize business to help the taxpaying residents of the community. It's a delicate balance. I think over the past 10 or 12 years we've been doing this, we've tried to be as fair as possible, and I'd like to continue that track that we've carried out since about 2007 or '08. That's it.
Thank you. Selectman Mills.
Would you mind if I wait till other people speak? I can, I can start by saying, I don't believe that this is a proper function of government. I can, I can start by saying, I don't believe that this is a proper function of government to make one class of property, like, it pits the residential owners in Danvers against the commercial owners. And it says to the board of Selectmen, to make a classification, there is no rule, rhyme, or, and I've been a lawyer for 50 years as of this month. I have lived that professional life according to a set of rules that you can read in a book that are applicable to everybody, and then it is applied to the particular facts of the case. I have, for five years, gone through the classification hearing with the board, and I respect everything that my board members say, but in the final analysis, I feel as though I am given the authority to take a dart and just throw it at a wall, and wherever it lands, that's the classification. Or alternatively, I'm able to say, well, the, the speed limit for you on Sylvan Street will be 20 miles an hour, but the speed limit for you will be 17. Why is the difference? Well, because I said so. And my whole life, I have never been comfortable with, I said so. And when government says, or any person in power, in authority in government says, this is the way it is because I said so, that grates me to the core. I'm going to listen to my other board members. I have voted for a particular classification figure in the last five years. I suspect I'm probably going to go along with, with my board members, but I, I share Mr. Clark's apples and oranges, and I see it, you know, differently as, just because I said so, that's what it's going to be. I don't think that I or any other person in an organized democracy has the right to have that authority over either the property or person of another, just because I said so. But I will listen carefully to Gardner and Diane and Dan as to the reasons why there should be a classification. And the other thing is, I don't think we've ever had a representative of the commercial community in Danvers come to these classification hearings to present the opposing point of view. I mean, the principal point of view of all residents that I speak to in Danvers, and there are a lot in my age group, we're between 70 and 90 years old. The word "pretty" doesn't appear in our vocabulary. We are just respectful for each other, and we are interested, and constantly I am asked, rather than approaching government and say, well, we kept the tax rate down to a 3% growth this year, the people in my community say, well, why don't we say, let's reduce the tax burden by 3% this year, rather than spend into our levying capacity and all. So I would like to postpone any further, and maybe I'll ask to make further remarks after I hear. The more, the experienced and sophisticated comments that I've heard through the years from Gardner and from Dan and from Diane, and so that's what I'd like to say at this point. Thank you.
Selectman Mills.
So, thank you. First off, Steve, you make this so easy for us. You've listened to what our goal is, and you do all of the math for us. I really appreciate that, that you listen to us and bring it to this, even though you can't make any decisions. So I do appreciate that. I would like to just, something Selectman Mills said that we've never had businesses here. Oh, yes, we have. And they have come in, and it's one of the reasons we've had great passboards that have kind of put us into this structure. We don't want to lose our businesses, so, you're right, it is a crapshoot to come up with what's appropriate, because we don't want to lose our businesses. But many years ago, many decades ago, we added commercial property to Danvers, not because we wanted it, but because it was a good idea for residents to have a lower tax rate. So that is why they're here, and that was the whole plan for it. So I, I think that we've done a really good job of accepting that. A few years ago, we made a lot of people take a bit of a hit, and that does happen. It's really nothing more than an adjustment. I certainly was very supportive of that. And now, as you're seeing, we are now coming to a much nicer place. Should we go the 1.377, we're talking residents in condos paying $439 a week or $19 a month, and we're talking, based on the average, based on these average numbers of, that were presented for a single-family of $445.9 and condo at 275, I'm sorry, $301.4, and then our commercial rate, which would be somewhere, $5 weekly, $24 monthly. So it shows you that when you make those adjustments in years, it causes things to level out in the future. It's just the way numbers go. If I say anything wrong, Steve, do correct me. So that's what I'm seeing based on the average, should you go 1.377. I did have one thing, was the condo, I'm really glad to see the condo assessments up for those people wanting to sell, but is that because of assessment, or was that based on the market value? What, what is that number based on? No, I'm sorry, yes, reassessment.
Yeah, I mean, probably a combination of both. We've looked really closely at the condos this year, being a reevaluation period. We break them down by individual complexes instead of overall adjustments.
Yeah.
But also, we also, you're seeing condos on the low end really, I mean, the sales prices are, you know, in some cases have doubled in the past few years.
Right.
It's the stuff, it's the small one-bedrooms that would have been, you know, you look at the sale in FY, I mean, 2013 or '14, and under $100,000, and now you've got them going for $210.
And I'm happy for them, because they stayed so level for so long. Most people buy a condo to either move into a home or, you know, for a short period of time, and they're barely getting their money back. So I am happy for them, but they will see their tax bill go up, and that's what happens when your value goes up. You know, and another thing, I'm going to bring it up because it's, it's a pet peeve of mine, is our pilot program. I don't have the exact number of what the value is of our properties that are subject to it, but I did ask Steve how much we collected, and in fiscal 2018, we had collections of $170, $173,000. Am I right, 819? Does that sound right?
Yeah, the only point to that is, you can add maybe $100,000, $120,000 to the sale on Beverly Waterboard, which, there's some issues going on with that, but we will get, we will get paid eventually.
So you're talking about $300,000 that came in, plus some of the others give us a service. So just so you know, we have $713 million of exempt property in town, cemeteries, let's, let's not tax our cemeteries, but of the pilot groups that we identified, which were, in my opinion, I'll identify them as revenue-producing properties, would that be an appropriate thing, would you say, to call our pilot people?
I mean, the, the criteria that the board used was education, so facilities of education, such as North Shore Community College, which is a state site which would have been, required legislative action, St. John's, St. Mary's, also the hospitals, so healthcare facilities. And then Danvers Y, based on its asset class under charitable, fell into that category.
Right, and of course, the Y is, you know, it's, it's amazing, the ones who have stepped forward, bear with me, because I'm a little slow today, that's what happens here, but if I'm not mistaken, we've had some amazing people come forward to contribute, and, you know, our health cares have come forward, Care Dimensions has come forward, indoor sports has come forward. I know that you've had prior negotiations, prior to us starting this. So I'm just saying that, that pilot program, if you're, if you're saying, why are we paying so much? Our police department, our fire department, our DPW goes out and provides top-level services, and whether or not they, we receive that money or not, and kudos to them, and kudos to the town for making sure that service comes first. We certainly never want to lower ourselves to anybody else. So I just wanted to bring this up. As we talk about tax classification, I do think the two go hand in hand in that, and I apologize, I don't have the value of what is actually, we were looking for subject, but between services and money, we've done well, we could do a lot better. So I am, you know, really almost saying, this is probably, thank goodness, one of my easier years. We're not taking the hit as we had to a few years ago. I'll listen to what rates people would like to go to, but based on an average home of $468.3, you're looking at a $228. If we use the same percent, the same rate, the same shift as last year, which is the 1.3770, and am I saying that correctly? Just want to make sure I don't lie. So just, just want to get it out there, but again, just so Selectman Mills knows, the commercial plays a significant part. And I remember speaking at the, at the mall, and the, and the director was there, and I said, the mall is very important to Danvers. It saves us a lot of money, and we need the mall to be successful. So we need our businesses to be successful in order to help keep our rates down. So that's enough for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Selectman Bennett.
Thank you. I want to first of all agree with Selectman Clark that over the number, past number of years, we've tried to be fair in this distribution. And because we've been fair, I think the businesses realize it, and that's why the room is packed like it has been in the past. The businesses feel that we will be fair. But, and David, before you came, we'd fill this room up with business people.
Dan, say.
Say, before you were on the board, this room would be filled with business people. So I guess you coming on the board makes them comfortable, they don't have to come.
Okay. Or maybe they didn't want to listen to me.
Steve, condos, last two years, I said you weren't really on top of the increase in values in condos. This year, I think you've, you've got it under control. Condos have been going up for the last couple of years, and their tax bills have been lower than they should have been. So, but I think.
We're a year behind.
Excuse me?
We're about a year behind.
Yeah. This year on the residential, you're right, that's about the increase throughout the area for residential increase in properties. And you also said that things seem to be slowing down, you're correct, properties are on the market a little longer now than they were, and there's a little more inventory out there. Surprising how much inventory's come on the market recently at this time of year.
I think people are panicking that the, that the high prices are over.
Yeah, well, that could be it. They want to get in now. You can never hit the top with the bottom.
No.
So I guess the, the big elephant in the room is, what is fair this year, and what number is this board going to decide to support? That's it for now. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. So some people have been here before, a little bit of singing to the choir, but I think it bears reminding people that this is actually paying a bill that was decided for us by town meeting. We're trying to decide how we're going to pay a bill. Imagine if all of us went out to dinner, ordered off, you know, whatever we wanted, and then when the check comes at the end of the night, we have to figure out how to divvy it up. Well, in May, Selectmen decided what they were going to ask the FinCom for, FinCom decided what they were going to recommend to town meeting, and town meeting decided what goods and services and projects they were going to fund and set a town meeting, set a budget for the town. This is how we can divvy up that bill. It's based on many factors, and I, I agree that this is an apples and oranges and grapefruit situation. Even, and I hear David's comment about, why, why do we have to go up every year? Why can't we remain at zero or go down? Well, that's a good question, but remind people that even if 2018, we did exactly the same thing we did in 2017, the same exact projects, added nothing to the budget, same light items, perfectly level, costs still go up. The cost of healthcare arises. Salaries, our employees deserve increases, and their, their unions fight hard to make sure that they get an appropriate increase. The cost of tar and the cost of healthcare and the cost of pipes and the cost of steel for the things we do, the oil and gas, and all the components go into providing our services, go up. Nothing's going down. Cost of milk this year is more than it was last year. So even if we didn't add any new projects or add any new items to the budget, the budget would be higher. So this is taking that bill that, that was asked of us from, through town meeting vote, and deciding how to divvy up the bill. One of the other problems here is, it's based on different methods of valuation. Residential is easy. You're going to, you go out and you, you assess the house, you look at it, you add some calc, and I'm very confident that my house is assessed in the same calculation and formula as the one next to me and the one beside that and all over town. Commercial isn't rated and valued in the same manner. It's valued by a complex calculation of, you know, the, what it could bring in for funds and so on and so on. There's many factors that go into the valuation. It's not just, what's the value of the Walmart building or the Fossa building? It relates a lot to its capacity for making money. So you're already starting out on unlevel playing fields in valuation. So we've tried over the years, we actually all inherited, every one of us on the board, the decision before us to go from even dis, even classification, no, actually, no classification, zero, 100%, 100%. That happened long before any of us were on the board. Now we're trying to make sure that we apply fairness. Just like when you go out to dinner, you don't necessarily say, oh, the five or six of us went out to dinner, how are we going to divvy up? Well, we could just say, okay, divide it by six, because that's the number of people. We could try to say, well, you know, David had a soup and Diane had a salad, and we try to figure out exactly what each person bought and divvy it up that way. There's many ways of trying to divvy up the bill. This is even more complex. So I look at it every year, and I, you know, I said, okay. People say, you know, what if, what if we went to 1% classification? People say, oh, you know, why, why aren't we saying fair value? You know, the, the, the value of the overall value of the town, 76.6% of it is residential and 23.4% is business, why don't we just tax it accordingly? So 100% across the board. That would be a boon for business. This year, they would drop an average of $8,918 in residents, well, single-family residents. When I say the average resident, I'm going to always say the single-family resident, would go up over $1,000. Well, I don't think the residents are going to want that. But no one can explain, and there's no formula, there's no one right thing that says what is fair. So now we're in a position where we have an unequal distribution or an unequal taxation, a classification, and now we have to try to figure out each year, the factors that go into it. When we have lean years, when we, I, I looked cyclically at the, at the history of, of the values and increases in residential and the increases in CIP, residents always outpace, or have at least since 2006, increases over residential. Residents always outpace increases over commercial industrial. When one goes down, one goes down even more. And I've noticed that we've, in applying this, what we think to be a fair distribution, we have actually, in some years, when values go up, we've increased the CIP. When values go down, we've decreased them, and it's pretty close corollary. So I, I look at the different ways. I looked at, if we maintain the current factor of 1.37, that's a decent number, because I look to see what the impact is, overall impact at the end of this, both from a dollar and from a percentage, dollar average and a percentage average, because I believe that the, the tide should lift both boats equally, or lower them, as it were. So I have some factors, I have some numbers. If we went to classification, our maximum classification right now is 1.5. People say, oh, go to that. Well, what that would do is, it would give the residents a $39 discount, but it would drive businesses up by over $3,000. Well, we're talking about not just the Walmarts, not just the Targets, not just the mall. mall, we're talking about downtown businesses, we're talking about Daniella's, we're talking about Berry Tavern, we're talking about the flower shops, and the small one and two-person places as well. On average, they necessarily can't afford that kind of increase. So I, I, I think a lot of people say, "Oh, tax the businesses, they can afford it, they can handle it." That's the plumber. That's a one-man plumber shop. That's, you know, so it's not necessarily, and that's who, that's the predominant number of businesses in our town, are the small businesses. So it's not fair to simply say, "Oh, the business has money, and they'll pass it on to the customer." Well, if they're passing it to the customer, that's me again. So it's, um, it's always a balancing act. And if you say, "Okay, go to the pay-for-what-you-consume model," like, "Okay, we're going to divvy it up based on what we bought, because we've got separate checks." Well, businesses don't, they use police and fire, and they use, you know, DPW, and they use electric, and all those other services, but if you took schools off the list, that's a major portion of our budget. If you took off the library and the senior center, because obviously they don't have a direct use of those facilities, you'd really dramatically lower what they'd be responsible for. So I have a couple of numbers in mind, but this is a, this is an opportunity for the public to speak, and if there's some, members of the public who'd like to speak and offer their thoughts and direction on classification, we would love to hear it. Are there any members of the audience who'd like to speak to this subject? Okay. Going once, going twice? All right. Then I'll hand it back to the, the board for discussion. I think I started with Selectman Clark. Did you want to offer anything else, sir?
No, I don't.
Selectman Mills?
No, thank you, nothing further.
Selectman Naglows?
No, master.
All right, Selectman-
Oh, Dan, again, I would like to, to say something. It is significant to me, through the years, we have had charts of what other municipalities have done on this. And it isn't like Danvers is the, you know, the only one. I mean, it's like every city and town in Massachusetts seems to have adopted a particular formula for, for allocation between the commercial and residential. So that maybe kind of made me feel a little bit better voting for a number last year, because I says, "Well, everybody's doing it." But just because everybody's doing it doesn't make it legal in my mind, so. But I'm going to be guided very much by what my, the majority of my board members think is proper here.
Selectman Bennett?
Thoughts? Thank you. The problem is, as a community in this state, we rely heavily on taxes to pay our bills. That's the crux of it, so we still have to tax the property owner, we have to tax the businesses. The businesses are enjoying good times at the moment, because consumers are out there shopping and buying, which is good for the economy, good for our businesses, good for our malls. But still, we need to look at a number, and I think we'll always try to stay at that 66% residential, and then the balance in the commercial and industrial, which really puts us in a number range between, well, of course, the problem is, not the problem, but over the last couple of years, we've gone out to four, five decimal points, and we've got all this paperwork to look at. So I'm kind of highlighting 1.4030 to 1.4290 as a range to look at.
1.4030 to what? I'm sorry.
Yeah, 1.4030, and then 14290. In between there is a high and a low.
1.4030 to where?
14290.
290?
Which gets us at 66.5% for the residential.
I think you meant 1.4029. I did the 66.5 and-
Oh, all right, so he's just-
Yeah, 1.45, okay. Oh, you're right, 445, 54, oh, okay. At this point in the discussion, I think it's kind of a free-flow-
Right, it is, yeah.
-free-flow discussion. So I did the numbers, and, and one of the models that we've had is the split of 6633, and actually, I went right to it, 66.633, and it came up from 1.4520. But then I look at the impact. And the impact is residents will go up an average, again, the, on the base on the averages, $125, which we'll still hear about, but the businesses will go up in averages $1,443. If we do a straight split-
Yeah, but how do you equate a, a single-family home with a taxpayer versus a business?
Well, so you-
Which is a large, a small building, a big building, whatever.
But I, so that's why we have averages. And right now, the average, commercial-industrial average is three times the average for the single family. So if the split were, you know, I wouldn't say the dollars should match, it shouldn't be $100 each rise, but I'm saying in proportion, if you're going to, whatever you raise the single family proportionally, I could understand saying that the commercial-industrial. So if in this case, the raise was $125 for a single family, and you told me that it would be 475 for commercial, I, I could understand that. I could, I could really embrace that argument. But here, you're really tapping it to the commercial, when in fact, residential values is what's really gone through the roof comparatively to commercial. So I did look at that, and, and I shied away for, for exactly that reason, because I didn't think that when you did the calculations, and, and they're here on the, on the sheet, I just pulled them off the sheet, that the increase, percentage-wise, okay, but the increase dollar-wise is tenfold, as opposed to threefold.
So we're going to deal with dollars or percentages?
Well, that's always the, the balance. Like I said, to me, I always try to see that both rise at the same, not the dollar-wise, but the percentage-wise rises at the same. So.
So what's your number?
Actually, it's 1.404.
1.404.
Means that-
Well, where's the other decimal? Where's the other digit?
Oh, 4040, if you want to say.
Okay, thank you.
1.4040.
4040, okay.
4040. Which means that the percentage change-
All right, so that was one right next to me.
Yeah. But the, but the average changes, still, the dollars outpace each other, but for me, the percentage change was more palatable. It was $175 for the resident and $900 for the, for the commercial. But residents went up 2.85 change, a percentage change, was 2.85 versus industrials, 2.79. So I looked at the dollars and the percentages, and that's how I landed. I landed at 1.4040. Close to us, but every year, we've done this, and we're, we're, we're at two and three decimal places, so.
Yeah, if, if the factor was 1.40, we'd both be in the same number.
Because I'm at, yeah.
Right.
Because I'm saying, listening, you, you had half my argument, and I'd, I'd even go more like 0.402 or 401, only because the businesses are not our major growth for this year. And again, we could, by, if we're not careful, we'll cause ourselves to have to make that adjustment again down the road, which was what ticked everybody off about three years ago, but it had to be done in order to get to the, back to this very steady lower increase. So your argument is, was, is spot-on, but you're going the wrong way.
Okay.
That's how I feel.
No, that's-
So I'd rather see it 4040. I was even up a little higher, but I'll leave that alone.
Because I, honestly, and to Mr. Mills' comment, in my head, Alan Weeks is standing right there, and he's going to, and he's telling us what he told us for years and years, which was, "I am a business owner, and I'm a resident."
Right.
And so I'm going to get dinged no matter what, so it almost doesn't matter. I can, I can almost paraphrase exactly what he would be saying, but he's a unique case, and he was right at the time, is right. But I think, but I, especially where residential values are far outpacing the increase of commercial values, I don't see further dinging the, the commercial. That's just like, I could easily go with 1.4.
Yeah, well-
Oh, oh, oh.
Right. I, I'm just, you know, again, you know, I was a bad guy a few years ago, I don't really care, because it was the right thing to do, and it got us back to this point. But if you have a, if you're giving all the benefit to residential and its business who's actually taking the hit right now, then hopefully, with this new tax package, they will all do so much better, and now we'll be able to go slow and steady back up, because we will be able to keep the residential down and, as the commercial, you know, everything goes like this. So I'm pretty confident, we have some great commercial properties, and I'm assuming that they're going to do very well, again, under the new tax package, so.
So at your 1.40, the average, single-family household will go up $181.53-
Yeah.
Or 3%, just over 3%.
Right, and that's just-
3.01.
I'm like $100 difference on the businesses, a little, about $100 lower.
Well, business doesn't go, they, they go up by $830.
From where you were at 1.404?
No, 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 I'm looking at the 1.4 line-
Right, I understand.
And trailing it across.
The difference between 1.404 and 1.400 was about $100.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. But here, again, more in line with the fact that it's not tenfold-
Yeah.
At 30, 6633, but here, it's fourfold. But again, because the average business is fourfold, threefold the average home.
And again, we're looking at this based on a lower home value, a low business value, and if you look at the mall, that $100 per is a lot of money, and if you look at somebody that's in a million-dollar home, well, they're really only going to see, you know, a $360 difference. I mean, we're, again, we're, we have to think of who we're affecting here, based on, we're looking at just this average, 1.574 million for commercial. That's a pretty nice average, actually.
So your increase, your, your suggestion, 1.4, the, the suggestion that's kind of being filtered out. At $181,000 a year, $181 a year, that's $15 a month-
Yep.
-for the average homeowner. Now, I realize that the first bill they're going to get is the two quarters. They're going to see a bill for $90, half of that. And then third and fourth bill will be-
Yeah, I'm really pretty good, anything between there, but I just, my goal is to recognize the commercial adjustment being much lower. You know, we're going to see a lot come in from the condo anyways, but not much value there. But anyways, that's just my opinion. We're not far off, so I'm not really too worried about it. I just can't see us, I, I don't want to do what we had to do a few years ago, which was a major adjustment. That really bothers me.
And the other concern is I hate creeping towards 1.5, because at one point, the, the well's going to dry. We won't have any option. We won't have any decision to make unless we want to go to this legislator.
Right, no, we're not doing-
You'll become a Salem with vacant lots all over the place-
Right.
-empty businesses, et cetera. I have very deep reservations as we move ourselves up, inching towards 1.50. We were at 1.42 back in 2008, when the economy was good, and then the economy went to the pot, and we had to go back down. Now, this would, this would be a six years in a row increase for the business people, a significant increase. And I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable about that, because you've got to realize, the small businesses, I don't care about the big businesses, they're going to make money probably, although they're going bankrupt too. But the small business people are facing minimum wage increases significantly, 10, 10 to 8, 9 to 10% a year for the next three years. They've already had the first one this year. It impacts small businesses.
Absolutely.
A lot of small businesses are closing or cutting back, because they can't afford $12, $13, $14 an hour for entry-level people, who know nothing about what they're doing. That, that's, you guys don't deal with that probably, I do. It's very hard to make money when someone can't tell a petunia from a weed, and you have to pay them $12 an hour to teach them about that before they can do anything. It's very, very frustrating. So I'm, I, I can't see us going anything above 1.40. I think that's even going up a lot.
That's going up a lot too, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So right now, without hearing from Mr. Mills, if I may, we seem to have a consensus of, in an area of 1.4040?
No.
No?
I'm not going to go higher than 1.40.
What is it?
I just, I think we kind of landed in the discussion with 1.4000.
Yeah. Okay.
After making them carry without four decimals, we'll look back to where we always were.
Yeah.
Mr. Mills, your thought on the subject? Anything you want to, your thoughts?
No, I have nothing further.
Okay.
You're going to have no money, Steve, in your budget next year for the ink to print all this stuff out again, first?
That's why I like electronic. I like to put other weather things-
You guys go to one decimal point next year, he can reduce his budget, actually.
Yeah, there you go. So for the sake of this-
But do people realize what one would do if we did, didn't adjust, you know, we never even talked about that. It would be $1,000 average increase residential, 124 condo, and we give our businesses a $9,000 break. So-
Yeah.
So people know, that's what our businesses do for us.
Right. Yeah, I had said earlier, it, the straight factor of 1, we'd be, we'd be, we'd be pilloried.
It was Mr. Al Alain, Al Alain who was out there, who was always-
Oh, no, no, Weeks, right, thank you, Alan. I apologize.
And I, I appreciate what Al always spoke to us about, our Billy and others like that.
Yeah. Many years, this place is packed with business people. So for the sake of further debate and make this accurate, I move that we accept a classification of 1.4000.
I second that.
The motion's made and seconded. Let's have any more conversation about it.
So for the record, what will that do to the average tax bills?
So I'm looking at, I'm looking at the line item on the spreadsheet that was provided by Steve. The average homeowner will realize an increase of $181.53, which is an effective change of 3.01%. The average business owner will realize an increase of $830.89, an effective change of 2.50. It will be a, basically a four-to, fourfold increase, business over residential average. Again, this is averages, it's the best we can work with, given that, but that, that answers, that, that's the answer to your question.
That answers my question, yeah. And I would be happy if that percentage increase was a little closer.
To where, Dan?
Well, I don't know, how do we get to a 2.75 for each percentage? Where would that put us?
That, that's the 1.4040. But then again, you, you're going, you're tipping the scales a little bit more towards the resident paying less, and the businesses paying now fivefold, or actually, bigger than that. Actually, almost, yeah, about fivefold. Is there any other discussion on the motion for 1.40? So we do have multiple motions here, and you-
Well, that's the first one.
Yeah, okay, so the selection of resident factor. Is there more discussion on the rate of 1.4000? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four to one? Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mills, how did you vote?
I'm voting in favor.
Thank you. Four to one, thank you. There is a motion requested for the open space discount. Does someone want to make a motion?
Motion not to have the open space discount?
Second.
Motion made and seconded not to adopt the open space discount. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alan, entertain a motion on the residential exemption as described by Steve in his presentation.
Motion not to have the residential exemption.
Second.
Motion made and seconded not to have the residential exemption. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. There is a motion for a small commercial, a small commercial exemption, as presented in the, in the pack.
No, no small commercial exemption.
Second.
Motion made is to decline the small commercial exemption. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now the new vote to grant authority to the Board of Assessors Chairman to sign on behalf of the Board of Selectmen on the DOR gateway.
Second.
So you're, 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 you're motioning to accept that?
Yes.
I'll second, I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to, as presented, other, is there any more discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. That ends classification for this year.
That was exciting.
Thank you very much to the Assessors Office, to Steve, for the data and presentation. It does make our decisions much more, much easier. All right. Let me find my agenda. Back to where we were. The town manager will report to the Board on various items of interest. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's hard to follow tax classification, but I'll try. I distributed at the beginning of the meeting for you some maps, and I wanted to just briefly explain what those were. Several months back, Selectman Bennett raised a question about designating a veterans-only parking space at Town Hall. There was a provision in the Brave Act this spring, when it was still a draft bill, to require towns and cities to designate a veterans' parking space. When the bill was ultimately passed, it was a may and not shall, so it's, it's at the discretion of towns and cities. So we, I had a discussion with this after Selectman Bennett made the suggestion with Peter Miranda, our VSO, and he took the matter to the Veterans Council, and they, they certainly support designating a space at Town Hall. Our preference is not to require a vanity plate to use that space, which was, which was what the Brave Act referenced. That's a, that costs money to get that plate. So we would, we would be recommending, and actually, we have a sign in production, because we, we trusted that the Board would also agree that designating a space made some sense. And if you're looking at this map, it's actually the entrance over by the Assessors Office. We currently have a handicap space on the, I guess, the left side, when you're looking down from the bird's view, and we have two normal parking spaces opposite that, and we would be recommending to install the sign there and paint the space to designate it as a veterans' parking space. And at some point, DTAC's gonna be looking at those, you can see from the bird's eye, the two handicap spaces that are painted directly onto the street, and that causes a lot of traffic issues, as cars are parked there and have to swerve around to get in as they're passing the church and the Town Hall. So we're, we're likely gonna be recommending at some point, not yet, but we'll be back to the Board to talk about bringing one of those handicap spaces onto the parking lot proper and off of the street. There's, there's not a requirement to have those two there, they've, they've been there, but we would look to relocate one of those. So, there's no action required of the Board. If there are thoughts or comments or questions, I'd be happy to entertain those. But that would be the recommendation from Public Works and Engineering, based on the support from Peter and the Veterans Council.
Any questions for the Town Manager? Thank you.
In my initial, looking at this map, I thought you were gonna have proposed out on Holton Street, but you're gonna put them up on the property of the Town Hall off the street, right?
Off the street, and...
Move the handicapped off the street as well.
We'd probably bring, we'd probably introduce an additional handicap space on the town property and off of the street, and eliminate both of the on-street handicap spaces.
I'm very concerned about that, because that road is too narrow, especially with the preponderance of emergency vehicles that go down there. A lot of the fire trucks or first responders to the western part of town go up that street, and it's way too narrow for the, for any parking spaces on that street.
It's also not safe for the, for the folks using the handicap spaces.
Oh, definitely.
They should be getting out onto the street side of the, of the vehicle, so...
And I'd like to see these things come to us. We are the traffic commissioners, not the DTAC. I don't believe those handicap spaces were ever voted by our committee on Holton Street.
So they, they wanna bring it before the Board when, when they're ready?
That's what they should be doing. They haven't been doing it.
Exactly, agreed.
Thank you for the update. Thank you for the suggestions.
So the second item, the second item I would mention, you should have received a calendar, a meeting calendar for 2019 in your packet. There are no changes from the previous version that was distributed. However, we didn't have a full Board for that discussion. And, and another question raised by Selectman Bennett regarding the May meetings was why the Board reorganized af, two days after the election, but before the town meeting. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but your thought was, we have a chair who, who works through the entire budget and warrant process, and then, the week before town meeting, the chairmanship changes hands, and it might make more sense to have continuity through the town meeting.
That was my thoughts, exactly. There's no reason in my mind we couldn't hold off on having a new chairperson elected after the town meeting, the first meeting after that, and continue through the version of town meeting with the budget.
And the, the clerk and I looked, and there is no historical reason why that can't be done.
Now, would that affect the fact that somebody might be unseated, if the chair was unseated?
If that were to happen, you would have the meeting two days after the election, and the issue could be taken up.
Would we have to change the bylaw in order to make the selectmen's term not start until after, I don't know, middle of May or something? Is that a bylaw, or is that something we could do?
But if the selectman is unseated...
Yes.
It's gonna be after the election anyway, no matter which.
Yeah, it'll make a difference.
So I hear what you're saying, after the election, you could have...
Well, the new selectman sits at town meeting.
But they could be, right, you're right. So if, if the condition where the, let's, let's play it out if it's this year. If I, if I were up for reelection and I was unseated...
Yeah.
Then the, the meeting after the election, the new Board would be sworn in, and they could discontinue a chairman then. If I was not unseated, then you could, as, as being suggested...
God, if you're unseated, you won't be at town meeting.
No, I get it.
Oh.
So, at the meeting after the election, but before town meeting, we're, that's when you swear in the newly-elected selectman. And at that point, if the person who was going to be chair is no longer there, you would then appoint a chair.
Not, not going to be, that was.
That was there, right. Then you would, then you would then choose a person.
Correct.
Otherwise, the presumption would be the current chair.
Right, so my thought process was that the current chair remains and through town meeting. If after the election, that person has not been reelected, then the Board would, at that time, appoint another chair.
Yep.
It wouldn't, but just as a rule of thumb, the current chair would serve through the end of the budget season, which is town meeting.
And I agree with this. I agree with the concept.
And if there's nothing in our charter that says we have to do this, then, I'd make a motion that we change the policy of the Board of Selectmen to elect the chair the meeting following town meeting.
I second that.
Should we start now? Start current, the vote?
Yeah, start immediately.
Okay. There is a motion to elect the chairman at the meeting following town meeting. Is there any more discussion, wait and second, any more discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, good idea.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'll point out a couple of things, and then if there are any dates on this calendar that the Board would like to discuss, we can do that. Noted in blue here, we're, we're tentatively looking at Saturday, March 9th, as the, the budget workshop for the Board. You'll note, in the summer, the calendar this year reflects what the schedule has been the last two years, and we will still revisit this topic in, in May or June, once we know what the, what the workload looks like at that point. But the last couple of years, there have been no scheduled meetings in July, one in August, and then one, and then back to our regular meeting schedule in September. And depending on where we are with projects and bans, we may have to call a special meeting at some point during the summer to approve the sale of bond anticipation notes.
So, can I go back to the May calendar, Mr. Chairman?
Please, feel free.
Would the meeting of the 9th be necessary? Typically, we just meet, have a, elect a chair and conduct very other little business. So I just, maybe we could leave that as a tentative date?
The meet, I'm sorry, the meeting of...
May 9th.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I was...
May 9th.
Yep.
I think it could be a strategy session, if in fact, the Finance Committee didn't back some of our recommendations for town meeting, or give us a chance to discuss how we're gonna approach that, that topic, if it came up.
And at that point, you'd swear in any new selectman or any selectman?
Do I just, you know, if we wanna make a tentative, subject to what's on the agenda? Or just think about it later?
I, I'm happy to have it. I'd rather have a meeting on the books, and we can be, even if it's a half an hour in and out...
Okay, good, yep.
Then not.
Thank you.
That's me, I don't know about the other members.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Any other question about the calendar? Here you go, I got a second one. Oh, you do? Yep. I had my original and the one that I just put in this packet. There you go.
Yeah, I just signed it.
And March 9th is in the blue line below, so, for the all-day.
So we're passing a document down related to the tax classification, and if you could each sign the bottom anywhere that there's space, Steve will take that with him. Get the sense he's gonna start driving to Boston as soon as he leaves Town Hall and get that filed.
How'd, how'd off the press?
How'd off the press? One other, a couple of other calendar notes, if there are no other comments on the, on the regular meeting dates. We are looking at February 4th, which is a Monday, as our tentative date for the special town meeting to consider the Smith School. And we're also looking at January 26th, which is a Saturday, as a workshop for town meeting members to come and ask questions of the design team and the school building committee about the school project. And probably, within the next couple of days, we'll be, we'll be distributing to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee a rough meeting date, proposed schedule for the Smith School, in terms of public hearing nights and things like that, that we'll need to get scheduled in order to maintain the calendar and the, and the schedule.
Sorry, what date did you say?
So we're looking at February 4th for the town meeting date, and then we'll be distributing some proposed dates for the selectmen's hearing and the FinCom hearing for that.
Thanks, Joe.
Just a quick update on the Haybarn Project. I know Selectman Langley attended the last meeting on October 25th. This was the first meeting that the Haybarn had the, the architectural firm, the engineering architectural firm on site, Spencer Sullivan and Voight, and they, they had a chance, the, the team had, had done some assessment of the building, and from what I'm told, had a very productive discussion with the committee about some of the ideas that they had, and helped to put into context some of the, the costs that may be associated with that. So, I imagine, in the next couple of months, we'll have a, a much fuller update for the Board on the, the progress of the committee. But this was a big milestone, getting the, the design team on-site to start to look at the building, because they'll be able to take the direction from the committee and put some real concepts together for them to, to look at.
Very impressed with them.
And this committee, as a reminder, is a subcommittee of the Recreation Committee, so they will ultimately bring recommendations to the Recreation Committee, and then, and then back to the Board of Selectmen. You received a copy of a letter, a cover letter tonight, for the, the third grant that we're pursuing through the DEP for our ongoing evaluation of our water options. So that, that's a grant that we should hear back on in the coming months. And I also wanted to update the Board. I had sent an email out after the, the meeting that we had, but the town engineer, Steve King, and I had a very productive conversation a couple of weeks ago with the Danvers Alarm List. We had, we had presented at the last selectmen's meeting that there was the potential for a municipal well site somewhere in the north coastal plain, and one of the potential locations happens to sit beneath the Rebecca Nurse homestead. And the back half of that property is generally wet. So, the town engineer and I went to meet with their executive board to discuss this possibility, and they, they very enthusiastically voted to allow us to do some exploratory work to see if, if there might be the possibility to place a municipal well there, which has the potential to be a, a big win for the town and for the Alarm List. Because one of their goals is, a couple of goals, is to bring water and sewer service to that site, and also to see a permanent restriction of some sort on that site. And I know that the town had discussed with the Alarm List prior to the purchase of La Belle's Grove, the concept of buying conservation restrictions or a preservation restriction of some sort. And there remains mutual interest from their perspective, and so the, the well site adds a new aspect to that conversation. But we'll have a lot more to report on that, but at this point, we, we did receive permission from them to do some, some exploration, so we're working on an access agreement to allow us to go and see if there is, in fact, water beneath that site that would be worth pursuing through the DEP. Through a very prescribed process, I will, I will add, it would be a long process, but having interest is step number one. You also received a letter in your packets from the MAPC. The, the Metro Area Planning Committee is getting ready to kick off its next long-term regional plan, and they, they happen to be hosting one of their prelim meetings in the library on November 15th, from 8:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. And local selectmen are certainly encouraged to RSVP for that and attend. It's in our, we're hosting, so it's a great one to go to, there isn't a, a lot of driving involved. But this would be a plan that would look out to 2030 or 2050 as a region, and where, what our priorities are, and what our, or what our goals are as a region.
Excuse me, Steve, is that date and time anywhere on our papers here?
You should have received a copy of a letter from the MAPC. And you can email the person, @MAPC, or you can always email Ann, and then she can RSVP on your behalf, if that's your preference. You receive, speaking of Ann, you received a memorandum from Amphretis as well tonight to me, which is really an update for the Board in terms of Board appointments to some of the committees that are up for reappointment. There's no action needed tonight, although certainly, the Board could move to reappoint the members who are up for reelection and have expressed an interest in being reappointed. But we will likely have some additional reappointments coming before you, before the end of the calendar year. But if you, if you wanna take a minute and review that, and if there is a desire to get those reappointments done now, we can, we can do that, and then come back, circle back later with additionals.
Steve, before you leave that, may I ask, who makes these appointments? Is it the manager or the Board?
These are Board, these are Board appointments, or they require Board action, which is why they're, which is why...
I'd like to have time to review what you just gave it to us tonight.
And I'd just like to share with everyone that the Historic District Commission member is no longer living in Danvers. He has been a subject of controversy within their Board, and a subject that has been disciplined by the Historic District Commission for not complying with their regulations in the past, and he was a person who I recommended three years ago, and I would not recommend him this year. And I think we should look elsewhere for someone who's a resident, who is interested in serving on that commission. He was filling the role, one of the roles of resident members of the committee, commission, but he's no longer living in Danvers.
No other reason to hold off on this.
We don't, there is no action needed tonight.
Thank you.
I just wanted to get those things in your hands. The next item I would point you toward, you received a copy tonight of the draft budget policy for the FY 2020 budget. Drafts of this were also distributed to the Superintendent and the Library Director, so that they could put this in front of their Boards. This is another one, there's no action needed tonight. We generally adopt this in December, and, and past practice has often been to wait to see if the school committee or the library trustees have any thoughts. But I wanted to get a copy of this to you tonight, and I'd be happy to answer questions in the interim, if anybody wants to reach out. But this will be an item for one of our future agendas. Some breaking news, I did receive a text that Cheryl James was selected tonight as Rotary's unsung hero from Danvers. Jen Breaker is at the Rotary Dinner tonight and sent me that item and thought I might wanna share it, so I'm sharing it with you now. I'm sure, I'm sure social media is an hour ahead of me, but it's nice to be able to say breaking news on television.
Especially with Dave.
Sure, we'll see it on Facebook.
And I think before, before I go to my last item, I would like to give the town clerk an opportunity to talk about the election that we had this week, and to provide the Board with an update on that, as well as the early voting that we, that we concluded prior to the election.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, a brief update on what I consider an administrative success as far as the election goes, with a lot of help from my Cracker Jack staff, and various town departments, Police Department, Public Works, and others that helped us run a smooth election on last Tuesday. Couple of numbers to throw at you. We had 12,704 voters, which represented a little over 61 percent of our registered voters, which I think makes all, all of us happy, that that many people turned out for a midterm election. And of those 12,704 voters, we had early voting, and that, the early voting ended the Friday before, ended last Friday, and it was 10 days in advance of that, excluding Sundays. The state prescribes certain hours that you need to be open, basically, the operating hours of Town Hall on a daily basis, that's when early voting took place. They asked us to have a night, we're open to 7:30, we had a night. They asked us to include a Saturday, and we were open the, the middle Saturday from 8 a.m. to noon time. We had 4,151 early voters.
Wow.
And compared to the presidential election two years ago, we had 6,976 voters early vote. And that is a 59% turnout as far as early voting go compared to two years ago. So all in all, as I said, I considered it a success. And it was doing a great part to the municipal cooperation from the police, Public Works, School Department, and of course, the staff that I work with on a daily basis. It was a joint effort and I appreciate the effort from everybody.
I wanted to say that I think a tremendous job. I'm glad you moved to the Field House, given the size of it. And between absentee ballots, special, early special voting, including a Saturday and Election Day and just the, the amazing logistics that were pulled off, there can't be anybody who said that they had a problem getting to the polls or the polls were inaccessible. I remember years ago, people complained, why is there only one day? It's not. Everybody had ample opportunity in person or by mail to get, to have their voice heard. So I'm very glad for the turnout that we had.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
Considering the things that have been publicized all over the nation about the difficulty of citizens attempting to vote, this, just our operation, thank you, Joe, on this election. There were wonderful young school kids manning a table there, greeting people and helping them find their place. The police were cordial and welcoming and attentive to the citizens. The parking I thought was superb because I can't walk too well anymore, yet. And overall, the whole feeling down at the Field House was so tasteful and classy. Plus, there were some signs up in various locations in the town leading up to the Election Day and I had no idea. Now, is the, early voting is, it's not a local option. Is it a state law, instead, Joe?
It is state law.
Okay.
And there's specific requirements. It's the, it's for 10 days ending on the Friday before the election.
Okay, so we are told which days to provide that option?
That is correct. And it includes all of those days except Sunday and the Saturday. But the Secretary of State's office requests or asks that we have, include a Saturday. But it would generally be, the law states Monday through Friday of the two weeks prior to the election.
Must be well publicized because certainly a great number of voters have used, used the service and great things. That's, I just wanted to say, what a nice job. Because I had been critical in other years and just, it was so graceful, tasteful and workable. Great staff work.
And Joe gets to be the face of, of that success, but there's also the DPW and other divisions that really pony up. And I, I also have to give credit to the school administration for scheduling, every year there's a, there's more than one, but the parent teacher about night or day and for scheduling it on Election Day. I think it shows the students, not that it's a day off, but how important is to the citizenry to be able to get to the high school and vote. And so it made, it made the parking lot much easier to navigate than if the kids were in and didn't disrupt their school day. So this is a planned event that they, they knew they wouldn't be there and, and kudos to the administration. The, the other schools were open and they'll have their parent teacher meetings on some other date. But good for them for the forethought. Any other comments?
You know I monitor the backup and that just wasn't a problem this year.
Diane, say that again, please.
I monitor the backup. It's right in front of my house. There was no, there was not a problem. I sit right in my living room.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
We may, we may issue a green vest and some, some flashlights next year and you can help us with traffic control.
Or I could sell lemonade.
Maybe hot chocolate on Tuesday, I don't know. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Joe. The, the last item, you received some materials from, in your packets tonight related to my annual evaluation. You got two documents that are virtually identical looking. One is the evaluation form that was approved by the board last fall, along with some highlights from the year. And in discussing that with the chair, he asked that, the memorandum that went out, it requested those completed forms be submitted to him no later than November 13th, so that he and I have an opportunity to sit down prior to the November 20th meeting and review the aggregated and individual scores. And then we do have an executive session scheduled for November 20th, prior to that meeting, to go over those as a group. And then I will depart that meeting.
So I do, so yes, I, I'm asking that you send me your responses. We, we can deal with the future goals in a more regulated pace, but by next Tuesday night, if you guys can either email or drop off your responses, I'll, I'll pull them into an aggregate. And I've asked Selectman Langley and I to work together on, on taking those and, and coming back to the board with the details and the responses. So we'll get together between the 13th and the 20th.
So the second item, as, as Gardner mentioned, is the, is the template for this year's evaluation. And I attached to that a copy of both the goals that we adopted together last fall, as well as some goals that we can talk through briefly now. But ultimately, I would be hoping that we could come to consensus on five goals at our next meeting on the 20th. Or at least have a, we could have a full discussion on the 20th. But you'll note that the five goals that were adopted for fiscal year 2018 were guiding Smith School into preliminary design, advancing the zoning efforts in our downtown, continuing to explore long-term water options, preparing La Belle's Grove recommendations for the board, and, and focusing at the staff level on growing our economic development presence. Some of those goals, I think, I included as potentials for this year because they, they cross invisible fiscal year lines. The Smith School is a multi-year project and we're entering a very critical part of that project process. That is one that could make some sense to include. I included the item we just mentioned a couple of minutes ago, which is to explore the potential for municipal water at the Rebecca Nurse Homestead. Certainly now that the Maple Street zoning was successfully completed at our, at our December 2017 town meeting, we're focusing efforts after the Smith School town meeting in February on the rest of Maple Street and then High Street down to the 128 Exchange. And there's some other items on here that we've discussed in the past. We do, I feel like we've been talking about this forever, but there is currently a side study going on right now with Wenham and Hamilton. They are still considering Danvers as a regional dispatch site. The chief and I continue to talk to each other and to our counterparts regularly on that because if the political support lines up, there are still significant cost savings for the town to bring on apartments. So we left that, I left that on here. But certainly if there are other ideas that you all would like to, to think about and bring back, we're a little bit behind schedule this year. We're about a month behind where we normally are because we had the comp and class study this summer. So we were a little delayed in getting the MCP back to the board. One of our goals for next year is to start this process as close to July as we can because the fiscal year ends and really past practice has been to wait until September. But we may try to accelerate that a little bit. And then the last, the last item noted in that memorandum, which as I noted here, I find hard to believe, is that my five-year contract is set to expire next year. And what is noted in that contract is if there's mutual interest in extending it, then that's something we'll need to be thinking about in the spring. So I'm, I'm noting that here. I didn't write it in here, but I, from my perspective, I thoroughly enjoyed the four years I've had. And I would, I would certainly be open to discussing continuing my time here in Danvers with the board. But that, that ultimately is a board decision as well.
Thank you very much. Any questions on items the town manager has updated us on? If not, I will.
Make a motion to consider the consent calendar?
Somewhat.
Motion made to consider.
Well, it says, yeah, it says, that's what I was reading. So the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar?
Might have voted against it will only be for the fact that we're including benefits to St. John's Prep, who has refused to answer in a positive manner any kind of cooperative method with that pilot program.
Do you wish to take them separately or just go en masse?
I had them separated last, the last meeting to have them brought up at this meeting for the second time. I'm just not going to vote for it because of them, because of that.
Is there any other comments on the motion to accept? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you. Thank you for the motion. All right. Correspondence, Selectmen's new business, previous new business updates and whatever else the Selectmen want to say. So Mr. Clark, let's start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Trast. I want to thank first of all, as we've mentioned before, Joe and the staff for a wonderful job with the election. I was a little apprehensive when I went there at quarter past seven and saw every parking space picked up and I filled up and I thought, oh man, we're going to have people on our tail about this. But within 10 minutes, they were all freed up, it was just the early voters. And I saw Mr. Trast leaving at about six past seven. He got there early, that's for sure. I had a resident approach me about a topic we've talked about in the past. And he claimed he brought it up with two other members of the Selectmen and there's been no resolution to it. And that is access to the Danvers River through our public access points. Residents who own property that are adjacent to public access points to the Danvers River on Bates Street, Mead Street, Dodie Avenue and other places have seemed to take over those access points and have made them mutually non-accessible to the residents. Also, there were signs that the town printed or had made up, they were put on those locations. And this person was very upset that some of them were missing. I went around and checked four of the locations and in fact, the only one that I found was on the end of Mead Street. The rest of them have been taken down. I also understand, after talking to some residents on Bates Street, that there was a major controversy in that neighborhood several years ago with the previous owner of the access point who felt it was his property and his property exclusively. And he got into a major argument with one of our town meeting members that lives down there. And it caused a rather unsavory situation for the neighborhood. I'd like to see us pursue these sites, have them marked distinctly, have them made known on our Recreation Department pamphlets and go out for access and for resources. The other point I was really concerned about, I went down to Parkers Island because we have a one-acre park down there that was a, an agreement with the DiLorenzo family and the town for them to use that property in a way, but not to block public access to the very tip of that island and give a, have a little park for people. Well, first of all, I think it's one of the biggest fire hazards we've got in town right now because we have several million dollars' worth of boats that are there right side by side. And it's almost impossible to wind, wind your way through the boat warrant or rabbit warrant to get down to where the public park is. However, there was two parking spaces available at the public park and a handicap space. But a lot of people don't even know that there's a beautiful park down here overlooking the river where you can look out down to the, to the golf course in Salem and on out towards the bridges in Salem Harbor. That's a public park. It has public tables. You can picnic out there. And it's at the very end of Parkers Island, which is made up of basically the rubble that was drawn out of the river back in the early 80s in the first dredging. So I, I think that we ought to have the river committee do, ask them to do a little attention to this because Gardner's aware of this, I know. And I think that Diane, you are also.
So let me, let me, let me offer some, yeah, let me offer some clarity because I think there was a mischaracterization there.
Yes.
The, the resident approached Diane first, just as people do all the time, with concerns. Diane heard them and acted, and she pulled me in and we went on a tour with that resident. We took, that person took us around in the truck, pointed out all the concerns he had. We took, we spent time at his home. We took a very detailed, I got a big packet of information from him, made copies. I've brought it to the town manager. The town manager and I discussed next steps and actions. There have been town employees who've gone out to look at those locations, agree that signs that should be there aren't there and should be replaced. And we're working on a remediation plan about which sites are actually easements, which sites are actually public access, you know, by the town, what the rights and responsibilities of each of those sites are. Action's been happening here at Town Hall, administrative actions. I reached out to that resident, actually the day after you saw him, I went to his, his place of business and sat with him for about an hour and a half, two hours, to let him know that when the initial assessment is done, we'll be actually pulling him in to discuss remediation and who are the right parties to do that. So granted, you, you didn't see that and wouldn't have known that because they're just internal things that were happening. So it's not that we didn't reach out. We've been doing things, you know, we, you know, administratively. And at the point that we have the appropriate details that the town administration is looking at and can bring that person in as part of the solution and talk about remediation, we will. So know that it's, everything that you discussed about what that person brought to us, in hand and in play and in process. I've explained to him the, the length of the process that may take, given other priorities and things going on, and the fact that winter's coming and replacement of those signs may not be appropriate before wintertime. They may wait till spring. But those are some of the recommendations that will come forward when we get together, get back together. So I can tell you that I saw him last Saturday and he appears to be accepting of, of the direction and actions that have been taken behind the scene. And thank you Diane for bringing it to our attention.
No problem.
Anything else, Mr. Clark?
No.
Okay. Mr. Mills, anything that you'd like to bring up, sir?
Yes, thank you. It was really nice to be able to go on our website and get the election results really quick after the close of the polls. I remember through the years, we counted at the Electric Light. I think we counted in Dan Toomey's office and everybody, it was really kind of a, it was really kind of interesting. I can remember my father, he couldn't wait for Election Night and the close of the polls. But it was really wonderful to be able to go onto our website, push a button and see them. And then the other thing is that I get an education of what a great town website we have. I don't know who manages that, but there is so much wonderful town information available on it. And one of the things that I was thinking about tonight, it would be, there's so many great things going on in Danvers for residents that residents won't necessarily know about. We have that great recreation department publication, beautiful color. I don't know how many people have that. And I'm just, maybe someday DTAC and some students from the high school who are interested in filming and stuff, we'd do a Danvers documentary four times a year about resources and things and water resources and, you know, access to the water and hours of the Town Hall, people who work in the Town Hall, so much more that can be publicized and evidenced about the quality of life here. And people may not complain about their taxes quite so much. And another safety concern, another safety concern, well, I hang out at the Y Pool on every morning with, with my girls. And we're between 70 and 90 and they don't take very well to any tax increase. So I'm going to get my, my Dickens coming up after this classification vote. Final thing is, I'm still concerned about stop signs, safety and intersections in Danvers. The intersection at Pickering and Hobart went full stop four ways. It's working, I mean, because I use it all the time. It is working so well. There are a couple of other stop sign areas in town where the trees need to be constantly looked at and trimmed so that the stop signs, I'm thinking of the one down on Chester Street joining Ash Street. I, I'm going to bring my own clippers down there, I think, because the stop sign is simply not visible from any distance at all. And we have, in the old days, when Kurt King was in charge, it was called the Shade Tree Department. But it was, we have people looking after our trees and landscaping and all. And that would not be a major undertaking to do a periodic check of stop signs. And then the one final thing is, and I think it's probably a planning department, could be a police issue. I love McDonald's. I go down to High Street all the time. But coming out of there, there's a bush that is in the way of seeing what traffic is coming down from the square. There are, there are intersections and safeties and accesses that really could use a little... There are, there are intersections and safeties and accesses that really could use a little, a little care and attention, because we're going to have a, a bad accident one of these days, and that scares me. Otherwise, nothing. It was, it was a great month. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectmen, close.
Not much, really, things are going great in this town. When I early voted, I happened to have a young couple that had a severely handicapped child in a wheelchair, and they had parked out front, and they were trying to get to the elevator, and so I directed them, and I think maybe, you know, seeing that, it was raining out, broke my heart. So perhaps we could do for early voting, a better process of them coming in the back, you know, no parking, but just parking to vote, come back down, and I think it would cause a better flow to the elevator, you know. The elevator is where it is, and we can't move that, but I, you know, seeing that, it was just, you know, just think it would be nice to make it a little easier for them, and those that need to use the elevator. It's really not accessible to our handicapped parking, which is a little strange. And the other thing is, pet peeve is, so we, we spent all this money on our phone lines, and I realize that we still have one phone number at a Town Hall, and you have to know the extension. Well, we all have cell phones, extensions don't work in our cell phones anymore. So most corporations have gone to, yeah, follow 3,000 number, and everybody, you know, can talk to a receptionist, but most have also gone to that the last four digits of a phone number is the extension, so people can direct dial, instead of going always through and, because if, you know, I don't know anybody's phone number, and I certainly don't look at it, I go, I hit the button, and it's supposed to send me to a person. And so with extensions, you have to look, you have to, you know, so it, that's, that's really old school. So I think that that's what corporations are doing, is they're keeping their 3,000 number, whatever you want to call it, but also, what are we, 1,000?
0001.
Yeah, I don't call us too much. But, so 0001, but then, we could be 774, whatever the extension, or we could do something that would make it more direct and message in and less confusion, and so just a suggestion. It's, we're really outdated on our phone system. I real, I must have had to call, and then they asked me for an extension, and I'm like, really? I had to look at my phone, so anyways, that was, that's all I have. Otherwise, I think things are going great.
Thank you. A couple of committee updates. One is, the Affordable Housing Trust has a meeting every month, and I know, Dan, you've asked about this in the past, we recently re, did our annual elections, there is a contingency based on your reappointment of certain people, those, but we'll serve through until, until, or if there is a change. I recently attended a safety and security meeting at the Beverly Airport. It was a regional meeting for airport managers, safety professionals in the area. We had people from Mass DOT, from the state police, from the FBI, from a couple of other agencies, talking about post 9/11 actions and modifications to airport security and various levels of response and how to respond. It was well-attended, place was packed, and they have a beautiful new facility on the west side, on the Beverly side, and it, it's not a public meeting for, based on the subject matter, but it was, it was really interesting and gave me a really strong feeling, and it was led by Tracy, I can't remember her last name, it just escaped me, our Danvers representative. Her role, her profession and her job is with overlaps to the point that she really drove home and was able to drive through this, this presentation. It was actually quite a kudo for the Beverly to be able to do, to host this regional presentation, so she really has embraced her role as airport commissioner and is helping them in a tremendous way. So that was good to see. I raced from that over to the RMV, the ribbon-cutting of our new RMV. Steve was there, Ted was there, Joan was there, a lot of legislators were there, and as you can well imagine, appropriately so, Ted got a lot of kudos for the hard work that he and Joan put into really get the, the RMV back in town. It's a beautiful facility, they really redid the inside nice. It is all-around modeled, all-around customer service, and you walk in, there's a concierge there who will help guide you and direct you, clean, big, and they're going to offer all of the services, including road tests and permit testing right at that facility, which we didn't have at the, at the mall. So thank you to the, our local legislators for pushing that through. This is an open question, I guess, to Steve. Route 62, heading up Elliott Street, if you peel off from Conant and head up to, head up Elliott towards Beverly. I know that the, the lights and signaling and the actual architecture and structure of the, of the intersection is the state. Is the line, the, the street lining their responsibility as well, or is it town?
I believe it's the state, but I'd have to confirm that tomorrow, Gardner.
The concern I've had for a while, and I actually think I mentioned it before, and people have brought up recently, is as soon as you hit Elliott Street, people treat that like a two-lane road going up Elliott. Yes, it does eventually break into two lanes just before the overpass, but people are blowing over the yellow line, blowing up that road, trying to get into that left lane. The other issue is, there's two sections. There's just prior to the intersection, the lighted intersection before the bridge, and then at the bridge and under the bridge. When you get at the bridge and under the bridge, it's left-hand only, it's clearly marked and indicated. A lot of people are blowing up the left lane into that first part, and then cutting right over and cutting people off. So the two things I'd like to ask that you might investigate is, either officially lining it as a two-lane road, which I'm not sure it actually has, or signage that you shouldn't, and at the point that it does diverge, make that left turn only as well. That's comments I've gotten from various people and thoughts they presented, and if you wouldn't mind looking into it, I appreciate that. Another unrelated subject, obviously Thanksgiving's just around the corner, everybody's, you know, and I don't even want to talk about the number of days till Christmas, but many people start thinking about their generosity and their giving for Thanksgiving. The, I just want to remind you, the Danvers People-to-People Food Pantry certainly would benefit from your generosity. They are asking this year, people to not bring them turkeys. The reason is, they basically don't have the capacity to keep the number of ice chest freezers they would want to use up and running year-round for the volume of turkeys they have gotten in the past. It's, you know, yes, they could accommodate them, but that means keeping that ice chest going all year long, because you can't just unplug them and plug them in and, and, you know, hope that they work. So what they do ask instead is, please feel free to get any other dry goods, canned goods, that kind of thing, but certainly consider buying a gift card to cover the donation of the turkey or of the whole meal, and that would be greatly appreciated. I sat next to some members yesterday at a Kiwanis meeting, and that was a comment they also made, so, and that they're ecstatic about the new director who is, I don't want to say replacing, you can't replace Barbara, but who's trying to fill Barbara's shoes. So that's all I had. Thank you very much.
I just want to add something to, something you said, that when it came to the RMV, the first action was taken by this Town Hall. Steve was right on that, had his planning department, so, you know, I, I know that others like took a lot of credit, but the initial action was taken by Town Hall here, so.
Thank you, I didn't, I appreciate that, I didn't mean to slay anybody by omission.
That's all right, just want to make sure people get that story straight.
Thanks. And now, as fitting, I leave it to Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Trask. First of all, I'd like the Town Manager to know that I really appreciate what the DPW did with the recycling day by routing the traffic into the parking lot and off of Cabbage Street. There was a nice little tweak that really made a huge difference. The year before, I sat in Cabbage Street for quite a while trying to get in there, and this year, we just flew right in, so that was well-done, well-thought-out by the staff. I'd like to mention that we have a Veterans Day ceremony at the Thorpe this Sunday, November 11th. The program doesn't say what time it is.
11.
I know that, but the program doesn't say that. So it's 11 o'clock at the Thorpe.
It's at 11.
And Mr. Richard D. Moody, Air Force retired, is going to talk about Danvers 100 years ago, David, you may want to get down there and get that history lesson.
Or give it.
Something else about the, about Sunday. It's 11 o'clock, but I think at 11 o'clock, or maybe it could be 11 after 11. It is, all the church bells in Danvers are scheduled to ring, so I see in the program, you know, that the ringing of the bells is like listed at the top, but if people want to be present during the ringing of the bells, if it's an 11 o'clock thing, they want to arrive at quarter of 11 or 10 of 11 and not at 11, or they're going to miss the bells. They won't miss the bells, but the community experience of having, you know, hearing all the bells together.
Thank you. So Veterans Day is Sunday, the 11th, and please remember, if you see a vet, to thank them for their service, and whether they're retired or active. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Entertaining a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Motion made. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, good night, Danvers.